Hi, good evening and welcome to the May 8, 2023 City Council Meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Councilmember Steele, can you give the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. Hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, will you please take role?
Yes, Councilmember Calmick.
Here.
Councilmember Steele.
Here.
Councilmember Landau.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sustarsik.
Here.
And Mayor Moore.
Here.
All present.
We'll move to approval of the agenda. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item? Okay, City Clerk, do you have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, four supplemental communications were received. They've been distributed to the council and made available to the public.
Thank you. I call for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
The motion carries. We'll move to presentations and recognitions to the Seal Beach Pickleball Association Report, and I'll call upon Community Director Alexa Smithel.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. A little over a year ago, the city entered into a memorandum of understanding, or an MOU, with the Seal Beach Pickleball Association for the purposes of advancing the sport of pickleball at the Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center. As is widely known, pickleball has really exploded around the nation, and Seal Beach is certainly no exception. So this was an opportunity for the city to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Seal Beach Pickleball Association to expand the sport and provide additional services. The SBPA has been actively engaged at the Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center, including holding events, league plays, fundraising, and investment in the center. And when the City Council approved the MOU last year, we promised to return to you about a year later and let you know how it was going. So this evening, I'm going to turn the rest of the presentation over to Chris Spott, who's President of the Seal Beach Pickleball Association, and he can update you on their activities this year.
Thanks, Alexa. So my name is Chris Spott. I've been a member of the Seal Beach Tennis Center and Pickleball Center for probably the last 15 years, so it's really exciting to actually see pickleball come and bring a whole new batch of people to the center. And it's been fun to just sort of see all the activity that's happening out there. So the first thing I want to say is thank you to the City Council for trusting the association to take on the task of pickleball over at the center. So onward with the presentation. So one of the things that we were asked to do was create more events, create more activities. And so over the last year, we've held five round robin events where we've drawn in participants from as far away as Santa Clarita. A lot of local people come in and play our events. We've had three fundraising events, two nighttime fundraising events, and the proceeds, I'll get to the proceeds in a couple minutes, and then we have one off-site proceed or one fundraising event. Also, we brought in leagues. Some of the membership that we've had have asked, hey, more competition, more opportunities to play. We have a lot of opportunity for drop-in play, but they wanted more competition, so we brought in league play out there. And then one of the fun things that we've done is, you know, pickleball is becoming a more national sport. There's a whole professional organization now. So we brought in last year Catherine Parento. She put on an all-day clinic for members of the association to come in, learn from the professional. So we had a lower level in the morning, higher level in the afternoon, so it was really a fantastic day. We're bringing her back in June, so if anybody's interested, come on out. We're having a, it's a good time. In general, what we've had is, and I think the number has even gotten higher now, we've had over 400 participants in our, in our events over the last year. So it's really good, so we feel like we're really doing some, bringing some strong events to the organization. Again, our, our events, our activities, we've had the team round robins, we had a Veterans' Day team round robin, we've had fixed partner round robins, and then we've had Women's Day League round robins, where we continue to participate with, with players from the community. Also, as part of our, our charge is volunteer activities. So we've drawn in a number of opportunities. We've, we've brought in kids from the McAuliffe Middle School, taught them pickleball. We're trying to work more with Los Alamos Unified to bring in more of the students, maybe the, the teachers. I know we've hosted the city, the city's brought in the staff engagement team. We've hosted them for a day down there. We also, one of the things that I'm proud, because I'm a, I'm a, I'm a veteran myself, and so we hosted our veterans' round robin back in November. And part of the proceeds from our round robin, we actually contributed to the, the women's warriors organization. So pretty proud of that, pretty proud of the organization we're putting, putting forward. We've participated in the Run Seal Beach, and Run Seal Beach has been also given back to, we've applied for a grant, so that's part of our ongoing commitment to the city is back and forth committing to the, participating in their event, as well as they are helping us with the, the grants. Facility enhancements, one of the things that we were observing was that we knew that the city was stretched with budgets and not able to, to do all the enhancements that we thought we wanted to do. So that's part of the, the reason we went with the, the organization was we said, hey, if we, if we have these events, then part of the proceeds from our events will drive them back into the facilities and drive them back into making improvements in the organization. So what we've done so far this, today, it is we've bought four tournament-grade pickleball nets for the courts out there. We've brought in 16 new benches for all the pickleball courts. And then we just have an ongoing support. When the city came in and had the, the contractor perform the resurfacing of the court, one of our folks came out there with them and was trained on how to do crack repairs. So that's part of our ongoing participation is maintenance of the courts. So we'll actually go out there and do minor crack repair to keep them, keep them upgraded as we go along. And, and the other thing we've done is just recently, we put out a survey to the, to the complete membership. I think we're up to 268 members at the pickleball associate, or the pickleball organization, and we put out a survey saying, hey, where do we want to drive the funds next? And, and the top, the top item that's been identified is, is ball, a ball fences between the court. So the bottom line is that we're trying to draw input from our memberships so that we, so as they have events and they have participation, they have a say in where the money goes to. So that's kind of what it's all about. We are a 501(c)(3)C, so we have a fairly formal need to make sure we have good, good organization. We have ongoing meetings with the city, the Parks and Rec Department, to make sure that we understand what's important to them, what's important to us. We've had ongoing membership meetings, three general meetings with our, with our, with our, with our membership. And then also, we just maintain a, a good board structure. So we have a monthly meeting of our internal boards, so we keep our, our own operations and everything going forward and trying to keep all of our, all of our documents correct. So again, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but mostly I just wanted to say thank you to the, the city. I thank you for being committed to the tennis center and the pickleball center. I know both the tennis folks, I'm still a tennis player, but the pickleball folks are happy with, with the commitment that y'all have made to the organization. And I just want to say thank you for your time and thank you for, for all your commitment to us. So thank you. I'll turn it back over to Alexa.
Thank you very much.
Are there any questions or, or comments that we could answer for the council? Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the annual comprehensive financial report presentation, and I'll call upon Finance Director Barbara Aronado.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, Madam City Manager, city staff, and most importantly, our residents. I'm pleased to say that the annual comprehensive report is final. On April 26, the city's audit subcommittee met with the independent auditor Francis Quo, partner with the Poon Group, to go over the city's financial position in greater detail. The Poon Group prepared the ACFA in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles for government units. And staff also has submitted the ACFA to the Government Finance Officers Association for consideration for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Kenneth Poon, managing partner and CEO of the Poon Group, the independent auditor, is here to present the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Good evening, Mayor, Member of the City Council. Again, my name is Ken Poon. I'm the managing partner of the firm, and sorry for Francis not being here tonight because she needs to attend another conference, but I'm here to present the audit results to you. So, so what we cover is a standard presentation after the audit, so there's a communication with those charged with governance where we determine the city council is those charged with governance under the professional standard. What we are going to cover tonight is a couple of things. Our responsibility in accordance with the professional standard that we follow, the required communications, and last but not least is the order, deliver our audit results to you. So a couple of things regarding our responsibility in accordance with professional standard. We are following two, two set of standards. One is the AICPA, generally accepted auditing standard, and then the second is the government auditing standard. Under both standards, we are, we're here to form and express our opinion to determine whether the financial statements are fairly present in all material respect in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle, which the governmental, governmental account, the government accounting standard board is the standard-setting bodies for state, local government. So the city is here to abide by all those principles. Our responsibility is to plan and perform the audit to make sure, like to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, so that's why we are doing our, our sample on a test basis to make sure that these financial statements are free from material misstatement, whether due from fraud or errors. We consider internal control over financial reporting, but such, such consideration is only to determine our audit procedures and not to provide an assurance on internal control. However, if we identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiency in internal control, it will be reported to you in a separate letter. Last but not least, with the new standard, we need to also evaluate the city's ability to continue as a going concern, to make sure that you have the ability to run your city in the next fiscal year. So required communications, first thing first is about our independence. The city, besides we are the auditors for the city, we also do provide non-audit services to the city of Seal Beach here, including the preparation of the financial statement and then also the implementation of the new GASB pronouncement on leases. So those actually require a lot of effort from, from our end. A couple of the things we need to evaluate is the, first, the city has a, someone that has the skill, knowledge, and experience to take responsibility of the financial statement and then also oversee our, our services. And then also, as a firm perspective, we are required to go through the safeguard to make sure that we are lowering our threats to independence to an acceptable level. By doing so, we comply with all ethical requirements, and we are independent from the, from the city of Seal Beach. It's very important because otherwise we won't be able to issue our audit opinion to you. Significant accounting policy has been disclosed in Note 1 to the financial statement, so it's a pretty, couple pages of note talking about your policy and procedures. Very importantly, this year, you have a one new GASB pronouncement has a significant impact to your financial statement, which is leases accounting, GASB 87. So the new lease accounting is a, is kind of eliminate the old methodology on dividing the lease, divided into operating lease versus capital lease. All these are treated the same, except for if it is like a, a short-term lease, which is a 12 months or less, you still run it through your income statement. But all of your leases longer than 12 months, so you, you're required to record it on your, on your balance sheet. So on both lessor and less C-side. So that, therefore, you see a big significant change in current fiscal year because on the lessor side, you are recording a $10 million of lease receivable, offset by the deferred inflow of resource relating to leases, because the deferred inflow of resource of leases will be amortized over the, the life of the leases and recognize those revenues. So those are the big change on the, on the financial statement under the current fiscal year. Also, US GAAP, the generally accepted accounting principle, is required us, require the city to record estimate on these financial statement. Couple things. One, investment, the investment fair value, so we need to mark the, the investment to the market. Second, depreciation on capital asset, the estimated useful life of the asset are pretty much an estimate. Pension and OPAT liability is purely an estimate determined by the actuary. So on the pension side, it's a, it's done by CalPERS, and in that OPAT liability, you have an outside actuarial study to determine the liability on, as of June 30, 2022. Also, a couple of sensitive disclosure. Note 1, as I said, is the accounting policy, so it's pretty much, I highly recommend you read through that. Note 9, 9 and number, Note 9 and Note 10 is relating to pension and other pools employment benefit plan. That disclosed a lot of assumption being used by your actuary, so those are included in the, in the financial statement. And Note 13 is individual fund disclosure. There are some fund that has a deficit fund balance, so that does require your attention to it. We do not have any uncorrected misstatement, all the, all the things that we noted during our audit, and then also the client's post, the, the audit adjusting journal entry, to make sure that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. Once in a while, the city may go out to seek second opinion on accounting treatment, but to the best of our knowledge and management inform us, there's no such consultation. We encountered no significant difficulties, and then also, we do not have any disagreement with management in terms of accounting treatment or all the procedures that we perform. Last but not least is to deliver our audit results. Happy to say that the financial statements are fairly presented, so we issue a modified opinion, which states that the financial statements are fairly present in all material respect, significant accounting policy have been consistently applied, the estimates are reasonable, and the disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statement. Also, very good things that the city doesn't have any internal control issue. We do not have any notation on material weaknesses on internal control or significant deficiency in internal control. So basically, it's pretty, runs pretty smoothly, so we are happy to, to say that there's no findings for the current fiscal year. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any council questions?
Um.
Councilmember Landau?
Yes. Okay, so I had a little trouble hearing you, but I just want to confirm that the, the only significant change to updating, the updates to the accounting standards was the GASB 87?
Correct.
So that was the only significant one?
That's correct.
Okay, and are there any upcoming updates or?
Yes, in the upcoming year, it's kind of following the same concept with lease accounting. There is a, a statement number 96 on subscription-based information technology arrangement, which the city has quite a bit of subscription. So we'll work with your IT department, finance department, to determine the number of contracts that you have. It's the, pretty much the same concept as, as leases, because once you sign the, the subscription agreement, you have a liability on your face of a financial statement. So we, we, similar to leases, we also capturing the subscription asset, amortizing over the life of the subscription term.
And that'll go into effect in 2023?
2023.
Okay. Also, can you provide any additional insights or recommendations based on the financial report that could help the city improve its financial, or finance, financial performance?
Sure, that's a pretty broad questions here, and it's a really, really good questions. Couple of the things that I would like to, to note, because of the inflation, the city is pretty much, the, the revenue are pretty stable. So in, in order to catch up with the, with the inflation, you got to increase your revenue. The other thing is we have to deal with the CalPERS, the investment loss in the, in, in last year, so expecting the contribution rate will go up too.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
A few. When you did, when you talk about the test sample, I guess, what, how much do you look at?
Well, depending on the, the different opinion units, we, we look at a lot of things in the general fund, look at a lot of things in the water and sewer fund, because those are major fund in the, in the, as the whole entire operations. But we have to test all the, like, a lot to, to get our comfort level. Couple of the things what we do is risk assessment, so we do test of internal control over a couple areas, like, including the payroll, including the water and sewer revenue, because those are a lot of different small number and a lot of transactions. We got to rely on your internal control. Some of the samples, what we do is confirmation, long-term debt. Those we actually send out confirmation to your trustee to confirm the, the balances, to make sure that the balance on the, on the books are correct.
How do you pick what you look at? Is it just like a 10% of the?
We look at, there's a calculation based on our professional standard. The city of Seal Beach, we consider as a low-risk quality, so our, our threshold was a little, little bit higher. So we, we have a calculation on determining the individual significant item, the number, so that we select samples above that number for, for our testing.
Okay. And when, when you talk about the GASP 87 lease, can you give an example of?
Cell tower. So cell, cell tower lease. So the, the communication company wanting to put a cell tower on your piece of land. Usually it's a long-term. So you need to capture the, the long-term, like, the whole entire lease term, recording it as a lease receivable, and then also recording as a deferred inflow of resource, because you are not recognizing the revenue until it is being earned, so it's pretty much amortized over the lease term. Same thing on the less C-side, you are leasing a equipment. So if, if you are leasing an equipment, but that, that number is relatively small compared to the lease receivable side.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be returned to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council, and not to any individual, member of the staff, or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Do you have any public comments?
Joyce Ross Parquet, Old Town resident, 50 years Old Town resident. I live here on my home. At one of the meetings that you had local in the afternoon, I went to, but when Sunset Aquatic Park came up, no one spoke about it. A Sunset Aquatic Park belongs to Seal Beach. I gave you, I, I made copies. And over there on the property was a place that should have been saved to build apartments, but now it's loaded with boat trailers. When I took a look at it, you have to go down, if you're going down to, to Surfside, you can look over to the left and you can see the property that belongs to Seal Beach. But there's someone from Huntington Beach that maintains the boats. Now, if the person lives on a boat, they should be paying taxes to the city. And those trailers belong, where the, where the port, where the boat trailers are, that part belongs to the city and they should be paying for it. I gave you a copy, it's an old copy, but that's the part that belongs to Seal Beach. And I see now on the agenda, they've taken the sewer line off the sixth, on Sixth Street off the agenda. So we don't get a new sewer line, right? And then the other thing I want to talk about is the, the meeting also about Cal, about the retirement fund. That retirement fund should have been refinanced about three years ago, like Huntington Beach did, because then you don't have to pay the high interest rate, because it's getting huge, that retirement fund. You can't retire, you can't, you can't change it now from the interest rate, because you didn't do it when Huntington Beach did, and that was like three years ago. And I came down here and suggested that you do it, but nobody did. So, and on Friday, March 17, there was a closed session at 11:30 a.m. in the conference room. And it was regarding a police item. So I went down there and I stood from 11:15 to 11:30 and waited for the room to be opened up. The city manager came and said, just wait, we're going to, you know, changing the chairs and we'll get you in. So when 11:30 came, she did come out and said, it's time, you can come in now. So I came in and I sat down, and I think you all were there. She, she then invited me to leave. She invited me to leave the public hearing on the police department. So I got to thinking about that. Why would she invite me to leave when I am a legitimate taxpayer down here? Because I had told her her time was up too. Her time, she's been here too long. There's somebody local in this community that can take over this city and run it legitimately. Why are we broke? Now, the, two times, she's mentioned that we're broke. Why are we broke? I only, I've only seen two houses that went into foreclosure. Why are we broke? We have brand-new houses up on Seal, up on the beachfront, and I don't see anybody else moving out. They have to be paying their, their taxes, and, and of all of our property taxes, you get 15%. So where's that money going? So I just wanted to discuss that, because my time is not up yet. I'm here, I'll be coming back. It's her time, she's been here too long, and I don't understand how we can be broke.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Any other public comments? Okay, City Attorney Guerelli, do you have anything to report?
The city council met in closed session to discuss the one item posted on the agenda. All of the council was present, except for Councilmember Landau, and no reportable action was taken.
Okay, City Manager Ingram, do you have anything to report?
I have no items to report tonight, however, you know, feel compelled to respond to the comment that was made, just by stating in general, city staff does not ask members of the public to leave a public meeting. The meeting that was held on Friday, March 17 was a special meeting for a closed session as required with all public meetings. There was an opportunity for the speaker to speak during public comment before the council closed the door for a, a meeting that's closed to the public. That's what a closed session means. So just wanted to state that for the public record, and if there's ever a question about that, the, you know, members of the public can also contact the clerk's office about what that process is. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. It was published as a closed-session meeting.
That's correct.
Move to council comments. Councilmember Landau?
Um, my, um, let's see. One of the most sweet and sorrowful things I did recently was to attend the funeral, an amazing testament to the life of Robin Fort Link, our Seal, Seal Beach TV. It was a standing room only, and the love and admiration for her was over. Uh, it was a standing room only, and the love and admiration for her was overflowing. It was a beautiful combination of tears and laughter. Rest in peace, Robin. Also, thank you to the chamber for another wonderful call show. The Chamber of Commerce, City, and Police Department worked really hard to welcome a large crowd to enjoy our town. Job well done. It's budget time, and every department has done a great job of helping us understanding the issues we face, um, in two nights of budget workshops that we just attended. Uh, we have more work to do, and we always invite and ask the residents to come and be part of the process. Part of my ongoing education on how our city works is touring each of the departments and experiencing the work that they do firsthand. Last week was a thorough tour of the beaches and lifeguard facilities. Thank you, Chief Joe. Um, it was wonderful. Next week will be a public works tour. It is eye-opening to see the extent of deferred maintenance and infrastructure needs our town has. I look forward to working with my colleagues and staff to prioritize and plan how to get our infrastructure up to date. Uh, also, congratulations to the Seal Beach Yacht Club on their 63rd opening day. It was an awesome ceremony. And then finally, um, please mark your calendar and plan to attend Neighbor for Neighbor Block Captain Meeting. It will be held Tuesday, uh, May 30th at 6:00 p.m. at the Police Department. The Neighbor for, Neighbor for Program is the Seal Beach version of Neighborhood Watch, and is really important to, to keep our town, keeping our town safe and prepared for emergencies. Uh, so please plan to come and be part of the solution, making a safer and resilient town. And for more information, you can go to the Seal Beach Police website and, uh, go under Neighbor for Neighbor. Thank you.
Mayor Pretem Sustarsak?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I attended an OC sanitation board meeting and an OC sanitation operations committee meeting. Uh, I, uh, watched a Los Alareos, Los Cerritos Wetlands renovation meeting on Zoom, uh, with, uh, some of the recent plans for the, uh, their redevelopment of the southern section, which is just north of the, north of Gum Grove, uh, south of the Hellman property, so very close to us, which was very interesting to see their plans. I also attended ceremony for, uh, Robin Fort Leaky and, uh, the car show. Uh, car show was a, a lovely day, lots of cars, a big crowd, uh, looked like the restaurants were all full, and everyone, uh, was having a good time, and everybody was quiet and well-behaved, it appeared to me, at least while I was there, so, uh, thank you to that, for that. I attended, uh, two work, two budget workshops and a, a planning commission meeting, uh, last week. So that's it for me, thank you.
Councilmember Steele?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a busy couple of weeks. I did a sit-in at the Westcom Call Center for the 911 Call Center, and it was, uh, eye-opening. It was, it's amazing how, uh, complete and comprehensive and competent that center is and how those, uh, operators, uh, work across desks when they have an emergency call. On one side, the other desk is already pulling up rap sheets and, and all kinds of information on, on the call going out. I was, I was overwhelmed, quite frankly. It was a very impressive visit I had with them. I attended the West Orange County Water District, uh, meeting with, uh, Director Iris Lee, and, uh, it was very interesting to see that, although brand-new on that, I've had little or no orientation, so I really can't comment quite yet. Uh, I sat in on the Audit Committee, uh, with our financial leadership team, City Manager Ingram was there as well as Representative from Poon Group, and we've seen that presentation now. I had the opportunity to ask all kinds of penetrating questions that I could think of at the time and get a, a deeper appreciation of what the auditing process actually entails. And I was, uh, again duly impressed, and I appreciate the time for that. Went to the opening, the classic car show for a couple hours, couldn't stay all day, but, uh, it was suitably impressive, a great city event. Uh, I've never seen that many great-looking cars in one place at one time, and so, I mean, it was, it was really cool. And then I, I spent that afternoon, that very afternoon I was invited to, as we all were, to the, um, the 100th anniversary of the Ramona Bowl out in Hemet, California. I had a VIP, uh, invitation, which I assumed involved food, other people, and air conditioning, which it did, and that was all good, but it, uh, the Ramona Bowl for me was something from my childhood. Uh, we lived in Hemet, California when I was a kid, and so Ramona Bowls always had this kind of sweet spot in my heart. So I went out, watched the Ramona Bowl with my wife, and it was just, it was suitably corny, uh, campy, and significant. It was really a great pageant of, uh, cultures, and I really enjoyed that a lot. Um, we did the budget workshops as well, I attended those, um, and also with, uh, Marine, uh, Chief Bailey and the, the tour of the beach, that was very informative for me. I've never seen it actually that up close and personal, especially over on, uh, Surfside, I guess, and, and the beach erosion that's going on over there. So I look forward to when we get our shot at new sand for that particular piece of real estate, and we got to go out in the boat. And I got to see how that boat functions as a, as a lifesaving vessel, although we didn't have to save any lives on this particular occasion. We did get a nice tour of the outside of, um, Seal Beach, and that was very cool. I went to the SCAG Conference last week out in Palm Desert. I enjoyed two days there. I'm not a representative on, on SCAG. Uh, Councilman Kalmak is, and, uh, but I did get to go to the symposiums. I attended a symposium on, um, equitable workforce and on housing. I found it highly informative and very, um, educational, so. As with most of these things, it's much bigger and more complex, and it meets the, the eye when you're not, not on city council or in these organizations or speaking to experts. You come to find out that these housing issues, for example, are infinitely more complex than, uh, than meets the eye. So I learned a lot last week, and I enjoyed it a great deal, so. And the weather did not cooperate. My wife did not get to sit by the pool in 100-degree weather. It only got to be like 63 degrees, so we were on one side, we were, uh, I, I learned a lot. On the other side, we were disappointed, so I hope to go back next year in the heat.
Councilmember Kalmak?
Thank you. Uh, I'll start with SCAG since, uh, Councilmember Steele has mentioned it. Uh, I attended the conference, uh, as I'm the, the voting, uh, regional director for SCAG for our city and, uh, which is called Region 20, Seal Beach, Los Alamos, Westminster, and so forth. And so, um, it's an amazing learning experience if you choose to make it so with the symposia that are available, um, even the General Assembly, uh, the various speeches that are made, uh, they bring in people from outside of, of our structure. And, uh, I'm hoping through actually just a couple of chance meetings, uh, with people who were there, such as the head of the California Housing Community Development Department, we'll see if that bears any fruit. Um, I talked to some folks about regarding transportation and the possibility of, of finding grant money for what they call last-mile transportation, which in our case would be the electric golf carts that we could hopefully integrate and be available so that, uh, folks living all over Old Town and the Hill would be able to come downtown without impacting the parking and, uh, be able to increase the circulation of parking and so forth downtown. And, um, with regard to, uh, pollution and the issues that we face in the San Gabriel River, um, I made a contact with, of all people, the Coca-Cola Company, who, uh, it turns out, uh, the president of their California franchisee made a very nice keynote speech and was talking about Coca-Cola's interest in, in working on pollution problems. They themselves are converting all of their plastic bottles to clear so that they can be totally, uh, 100% recycled. And soon as I heard him mention removing plastics from the ocean, you know, I immediately went back outside to where all of the, um, the sponsors of the SCAG event had booths and went up to the Coca-Cola booth and started a conversation with a, a representative from corporate Coca-Cola. And as it turns out, they are involved with the, um, what's called the Interceptor, which is currently being used, um, in LA County at, uh, Biona Creek. Whether something comes of it, I can't tell you, but it's certainly, uh, something that I was gonna try and take advantage of, and it might bear fruit, uh, you know, sometime down the road. So overall, the SCAG event, I think, was, was very worthwhile, and I'm glad that Councilmember Steele was able to go, cause it's another pair of eyes and so forth, and, uh, to be able to, uh, you know, you always bring back something, and that's the hope. Um, I even hung out with my son, who was representing Huntington Beach, cause he knows more people than I do. So, uh, that worked out very well as well. So I also attended, uh, the car show, which is, continues to be amazing. Um, it just keeps getting bigger and, uh, more well-attended, and as long as we can accommodate the cars, I think there were over 600 this year. You know, it's, it's just a great showcase for the city. Um, it helps our, our Main Street businesses, and it doesn't present any problems, which is somewhat unique in, in events that we, we hold in town over the years or have held in town. I also attended, uh, the Orange County Fire Authority Human Resources Committee, um, of which I'm chair, and where we discuss a lot of, um, internal issues and so forth, uh, at Orange County Fire. And, um, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Seal Beach Car Show was incredible this year. I congratulate the Chamber of Commerce on a wonderful job. Uh, I know there were over 600 cars, as mentioned, the most they've ever had, and the attendance was highest they've ever had. Uh, Tim Wei, Gary Bean, and Diane Bean did a fabulous job coordinating things. Uh, the whole process is very impressive, from watching them guide all the cars in in the morning to the managing, the judging process. Um, I was there all day. I ate the pancake breakfast and the hot dog lunch provided by the Seal Beach Lions and Leos, and I was honored to choose the Mayor's Choice Award, the El Dorado 1957 Cadillac. And, uh, I was also invited by Councilmember Landau to attend the Seal Beach Yacht Club opening day. It was also an honor to be there and present them with a plaque from the city of Seal Beach with Councilmember Landau. And I didn't realize so many people from the Seal Beach Lions and are also members of the Seal Beach Yacht Club, and I didn't realize, uh, Councilmember Landau was a member until last week. They're a fun group and very patriotic people, and they look like they have a lot of fun sailing as well. I look forward to going to a few future events. Attended the two budget public meet hearings, and, uh, one of the, one of the operational budget on May 1st and the CIP on May 2nd, and, uh, financial director, and each department in the city did a great job presenting and also gave us a reality check on the upcoming years, uh, for the budget meetings. I know it was a little shock to look at the five-year forecast, so I'd like to ask the city to arrange one more budget meeting to discuss the five-year forecast, uh, discussing how we can keep the budget balanced as we move forward in future years, and also discuss pre-allocated accounts that we have for the pool and of the pier. And I think we need this prior to adopting the budget this year, so I'd just like to ask the city to come back and schedule a meeting before we adopt the budget.
Yes, we can do that. I just want to clarify, um, based on our discussion, um, following the, the last two budget workshop sessions, um, we finalized those numbers, cause obviously our budget's balanced, um, so we've moved forward with, um, noticing public hearing for May 22nd. Um, so if the intent is basically to schedule a third, um, budget study session prior to May 22nd, then we can work with, um, the five of you and try to coordinate a date, um, that works for you. Um, obviously, as we talked about, the five-year forecast is just that. It's a forecast based on the assumptions we know right now, um, clearly understanding that that's fluid and it's gonna continue to move, but we're happy to, to have another study session to go through that again, if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you. And that's all I have for comments. Council items are none. Uh, consent calendar, items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed. Uh, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent calendar. I move. Yeah. See?
A second?
Please vote on the iPads. Okay, motion carries, 5-0. There's no public hearings, there's no unfinished business. We have one new business, item F, consideration of ordinance 1704 to add Chapter 7.65 to the Seal Beach Municipal Code to regulate operation of e-bikes and other regulated mobile devices on public areas. And I'll call upon Captain Mike Ezra.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, city manager, city staff. I'll try to make this as brief as possible and not as technical as it is. We found with e-bikes, uh, progress and technology is going way faster than the state can keep up in regulating it. But also, why not May to present this? Because May is Bicycle Safety Month, as recognized in the state of California. With that, if we can move on to the next slide, the proposed ordinance offers an opportunity for regulation of motility devices, enforcement, and there are some exceptions. The biggest draw, if you can go back, we're not there yet, thank you, though. The biggest draw to this ordinance, it allows law enforcement to have some discretion into what do operation with due care and reduced speed is to people on e-bikes. All bicycles have to obey rules of the road, that's for pedal-driven and a e-bike motor-driven bicycle. However, there are some gray areas and rules of the road and safe operation. This ordinance will allow law enforcement the ability to address those gray areas, and instead of fining children or fining adults that are riding it, it'll give them opportunity to educate them. The goal of our department is to educate and then enforce, and this ordinance allows that. The best example I can provide is a 13-year-old who's on an e-bike that turns out to actually be a motor-driven bicycle, because the wattage are much higher than what the state allows. It's not their fault, it's something they convinced their parents to purchase. This ordinance will allow us to contact that juvenile, contact that parent, have them attend a public safety course or class at our police department, and then learn, oh yeah, the e-bike that I purchased for my son or daughter is actually considered a motorcycle and requires a license, a different helmet, registration, mirrors, all sorts of different lights, and wazoo things that's mandated by the vehicle code. If you can go to the next slide now, thank you. California does define an e-bike, the section's up there, and they define them into three different classes. You can see, uh, Class 1 is a pedal-assist e-bike, and it can't exceed 20 miles per hour, and there's no throttle on it, which means they need to pedal it, and once they pedal, the motor kicks in and it kind of goes, and it goes with them as a pedal, making it easier. A Class 2 is pedal-assist, can't exceed 20 miles per hour, but also has a throttle. So once you start riding, you can stop riding, and then you can use the throttle to regulate your speed not to exceed 20 miles per hour. And while Class 3, uh, depending on which one you buy, some have throttles, some don't, but that can't exceed 28 miles per hour. Anything that exceeds 28 miles per hour is no longer e-bike, and it gets into the vehicle code of a motor-driven bicycle, a moped, and what we're seeing now are just basically e-motocycles, that some of the kids are riding around the area. If you can go to the next one, you can see, here's another explanation of the classes, and if you can see, this one offers a little more explanation on the third class, where at the end it says it's equipped with a speedometer. So if we come across an e-bike that doesn't have a speedometer, most of the kids are saying, no, no, it's a Class 2. However, when we look up online, the name and the brand, it's actually 1,000 watts, which doesn't even make it a Class 3, and now makes it into a motor-driven bicycle, which isn't addressed on e-bikes. If you can go to the next slide, Chief? Finally, here's another explanation of it. Again, I hope it's not too confusing. The key to this one, helmet requirement, anyone under the age of 18 on all of them. And helmets recommended on all ages for them, cause again, you're operating, in essence, a bike that has a motor that's going 20, 25 miles per hour, any type of impact to the ground's gonna be significant and/or into an object. If you can go to the next slide, sir? Again, I spoke earlier, the point of having this is for the education aspect and then to, and to enforce. Uh, we have been approached by residents, I've asked, hey, what are you doing about these kids? It's the same kid, multiple offender type situation. For us, we'd like to see that child and their parent or that adult on the e-bike attend our safety course so we can explain the regulation to them. And then upon the second contact, that's when we can cite for the municipal code, and it can go before the judge in court, where the judge can assess the penalty. We don't have a say, per se, in the penalty, however, if it's a third, fourth, fifth offense, we can bring that up to the judge's attention. a third, fourth, fifth offense, we can bring that up to the judge's attention or the commissioner's attention, and they can then impose different rules and regulations on how they want to either punitive damage the person or regulate how they're operating the bike within our community. Most importantly, e-bikes, as I mentioned before, some of them that exceed the 750 watts are subject to being impounded, just like a vehicle. So that is a tool that we can have. If it's a multiple offense and it's someone that's on an e-bike that exceeds 750 watts, which now makes it a motor-driven bicycle or a moped or motorcycle, we have the ability to tow it, just like we would any car. And then the serial number on the e-bike would actually be the VIN number for it. And then we'd fill out our standard paperwork. We'd call a tow truck. They'd come take it up. They'll take it to our contracted tow yard. The subject riding it will have to come with a licensed driver to come pay the fees at the police department and then go pick up their vehicle and sense from the tow yard. So there are ways for multiple offenders to be punitively damaged and understand that what they're riding may not be a bicycle, per se, but it's more of a motor vehicle on our roadways, and they need to operate safely and with due manner. Other cities that have adopted similar regulations are up here. Again, the e-bike craze is growing way faster than the state and cities can keep up. Each day, there's a new vendor. Each day, we're coming across new brands of bikes. The one thing we are seeing that's universal are in the manufacturers, their booklet on how to operate. At the very end, it normally ends with a standard segment of saying, please defer to your state and/or city regulations for the classification of bike and if it can be operated within that city. And for us, that's their disclaimer, saying, hey, you've bought this. However, we're not liable if it's something that you can't ride in your city or in your state. A lot of success has been driving this municipal code has been the city of Carlsbad. They have several high schools, and they reported back in 2001 into 2002 approximately 1,000 e-bikes at each of their high school. So they were just inundated and had no way of responding to it. And they implemented a code similar to this, which allowed them to go, then start enforcing it, and they were getting the kids into the class that were going to this high school on these e-bikes that were motorcycles, and explaining to the parents what you've purchased is in fact a motorcycle, it's not a bike. And they saw great success in the reduction of those classifications of bikes out on the roads, those classification of bikes going to and from schools, and in turn, reduce the amount of complaints that residents were seeing and a lot of issues that they had, just through the education portion of a municipal code like this. Next slide? With that, so a real brief summary of e-bikes, it's very, it gets very technical as you get into it. All address any questions if there are.
Any questions? Councilmember Kelman?
Yeah, Mike, I would just like to point out one thing that I think certainly the younger kids that are riding e-bikes and probably a great number of adults don't realize that an electric motor reaches 100% of its torque the minute you activate the throttle. And so I think, you know, I read letters where people are complaining or on Nextdoor, people complaining about the e-bikes and saying, I saw one going 40 miles an hour. Well, it's not, they're not going 40 miles an hour. The most they can go is 28 unless they've learned how to tweak the controller. But the main point is, is that they dart very quickly because of that incredible acceleration from a standing start. And we see them here, especially, you know, darting out of the alleys or darting back and forth. And, you know, I think that's even could be the biggest problem that we have, is the darting behavior.
Yeah. And the darting behavior, just like any vehicle, a bicycle needs to have due regard to safety of other vehicles on the roadway. So they need to yield the ride away. They can't just dart out of an alleyway onto ocean or onto any of the side streets. And same with the stop signs. They need to stop at all the stop signs. And this will allow us, if a 13-year-old is on a Class 1 or 2 bicycle, and they run through two or three stop signs, like they're prone to do, it'll allow us the opportunity to get them into our class and educate them on the rules of the road, which is something they may not have learned, because there would be no expectation that a 13-year-old would understand, short of parents telling them. There's no classes that they would attend, short of the class that we would offer them. And a lot of issues that we see, they're not so much the speed of it, it's just the people operating them not knowing what they have. They'll turn around and say, no, this bike is 750 watts, I'm fine. And you look up online real quick, or they'll have the manual with it, and it has what's called peak performance. And that peak performance is at 1,350 watts, which now makes it roughly about 150 cc motorcycle on the roadway. So it's no longer an e-bike, and it's trying to explain to them, hey, what you purchased is actually an electric motorcycle. And they'll come back, no, we put a governor on it. Just because you modify it to make it less doesn't change what it actually is on the roadway.
And in the case of the older teenagers, the 25 to 35 group that actually use it as motorcycles and go out and, especially when the berms were up, were jumping the berms, just like they were, you know, on a motocross bike.
Yeah. And this is a section that will allow us to get ahold of them, for lack of a better term, to get them into a class that, hey, this isn't acceptable. You can't be out there on any motor vehicle on the beach unless you're a lifeguard or police trying to be lifeguards.
Any other questions? Councilmember Steele?
I'm sorry. I'm glad we're getting a handle on this, to be honest with you. It's a good thing e-bikes weren't around when I was a kid. I mean, kids are kids, and these are cool, and we live in a free country, and they should be able to, you know, go where and do and have fun, take the risk of doing it, just like on a normal bike. People get killed on normal bikes, too. So, but I'm glad we're putting something in place that will require them or encourage them to get an education on this stuff. Because when these kids, and this has happened to me and some of my neighbors, when the kids are up on those bikes, they're more interested in making a jump off the curb or that darting thing that, and so, I mean, it's a thrill for them to be doing this stuff. And they're not thinking about traffic. I had one jump out in front of me just over here a few weeks ago, scared me to death, you know, and it made my heart pound faster than it probably should at my age. But nonetheless, I'm glad we're getting a handle on it. And I hope no kids get seriously hurt on these things. But I think we ought to, you know, it's a free country. If they want to go off and jumps over in Gum Park, you know, they should be able to do stuff like that, too. So can they still do jumps in Gum Park on?
They're not supposed to, no.
Oh, okay. Forget I said that.
Councilmember Landau?
Oh, go ahead, Shelley.
Oh, go ahead. I was going to get down into the nuts and bolts of the ordinance.
So, yeah.
So is there a minimum age? Because where I live at on the hill, I especially see a lot of, especially little girls. Is there an age where they're absolutely not allowed to ride?
For Class 1 and 2, there's none. For Class 3, they have to be 16 or older. And then anything that exceeds the Class 3 modifications, they have to be 16, older, with a valid license and all DOT-approved safety equipment on.
Okay. And then what about double riders?
That's a, that's a great question. Thank you. Some of the bikes are equipped for double riders, but most of them aren't. If it's a double rider, there needs to be a place for them to be able, the second rider to place their feet. They can't just stick off to the side. So it's normally getting some extra pegs or footboards for them to put it on. Most recently, on the hill, just last week, we had three girls that all tried to cram on one. None of them had shoes, none of them had their feet down, and only one of the three had a helmet. And we stopped them, and they're floored like, what was wrong? I mean, went in trying to explain the dangers and all that stuff. So two of them got off, and the one then just made a left in front of traffic and went up the hill to her house. And we're like, it's a slow process, but we're slowly getting people's compliance.
Yeah, I am glad you guys are getting a handle on this. Okay, so the last two nights in a row, I was driving down Crestview, and it was just, had gotten dark. And there was e-bikes being ridden fast and in the dark, and neither one of them had headlights. And I think if I would have been a distracted driver, I could have easily hit them. Are they allowed to drive these at night? Or if they are, I mean, don't bicycles have to have a headlight at night?
That's correct. They are required to have headlights and taillights, just like a bicycle. And I'd say the majority of the e-bikes that are sold here in California do comply to that. However, like I said, the progress and the companies that are making them, producing them, it changes almost daily with new and new companies that require our end of the research to figure out, hey, last week, the trend was Super 73s, now it's Siron bikes. And now we're waiting to see what this next week's going to hold in regard to the regulations. And it's trying to nab those people when they're out and about, let them know, hey, you need a white light to the front, a red light to the back. And even as far as if it becomes a moped and a motorcycle, you need turn signals, you need mirrors. And it's the education of what the parents have bought their kids or what someone bought thinking it was a Class 1 or 2, when it turns out it's actually a moped.
Okay, I just have one more question. Okay, so when these kids keep doing what they're doing, and now you're able to give them citations after they've done a class or even before that. So if they get a citation and they get to do the class in lieu of, I guess, getting, going to court, do they have to stay off their bike until they take this training class? Or?
There's no way for us to really stop them from riding their bike, short of us, like if we were to impound it, because it turned out to be a different classification. Our plan is to get a handful of kids, which I don't think are people, that won't be too difficult to get within a week's time span, to get them into these courses and have them every other week or so. Fortunate for us, with our dispatch and our records-keeping, we will be able to know, hey, have we contacted this subject before? And if it's something that they haven't attended the class yet, and it's their second violation, that's something we can start issuing the citation for and trying to explain to them. And the parents, look, by the time this class comes up, you're going to have four or five offenses. We're looking at more than just our class to resolve it. It's going to be, you need to attend our class, and then you're going to have to go to court for these other citations. And that's where we can sit before a judge or commissioner, explain, clearly, it's not working versus a flying, do you think it's possible to impose community service? And that will be up to the courts to decide on how they want to proceed, once it's in their jurisdiction. The class just allows us the opportunity to not have the 13, 14, 15-year-old or even the 20-year-old that just didn't know better suffer the court consequences. It gives them basically a second chance to get out there and follow the regulations and be a safe rider.
Okay. And I have one more question. So do you encourage the public? I mean, because again, there's some kids that are just really, really dangerous out there, not only to themselves but to the other residents. Instead of posting on Nextdoor and complaining there, do you encourage them to call the non-emergency number and, you know?
If they're out and they're doing the darting practice, or there's kids riding around, or people riding with no lights, 100%, I encourage them to call our non-emergency line to let us know so we can get officers out there. It's more than just a public safety at that point. It turns into their own personal safety. And it's something we like to hedge off before it becomes something more serious, like a collision or someone getting seriously hurt as a result of poor operation of the e-bike.
Okay. Well, thank you, Captain Ezrow and Chief Henderson and the rest of the PD for taking action to help ensure that the safety of our residents and especially our kids. And I'm glad that we're being proactive now instead of reacting to a tragedy. So thank you.
Mayor Pretends to Sorry.
Thank you. I was, I had some questions on the ordinance. If I'm reading it right, it describes the regulated mobility devices all sort of grouped together? So that means whatever applies to bicycles or whatever applies to everything? Or I'm not sure when it's restricting things here.
For us...
I'll just add that, yes, regulated mobility device, it includes more than just an e-bike. It also includes, you know, scooters and things like that.
Yeah. Which is, and I had a question. Basically, it said, you know, them off the sidewalks, which I think is already pretty much a rule in Seal Beach. Up in College Park East, we have some restrictions. And I'm not so concerned about the sidewalks in College Park East because they go like this all the time, and I don't think anybody really rides on them. But on the south side of Lamson, we have a wide sidewalk, which is allowed to have bicycles on it. And I mean, I agree that pedestrians are most important, but Lamson is still a scary place for people to send their kids on. And I was also had a question about the mobility scooters, because they come over the bridge from Leisure World to go up to the shopping centers. And we, you know, somebody like that could ride that sidewalk to go over to take the path behind the trees up to Old Wrench Town or whatever. So I was trying to decide if this would restrict those uses on this, on that particular sidewalk? And or could you just limit e-bikes? Anyway, I was trying to make sure we didn't have a situation where we would put us kind of isolated, since we can't really use the back door into any shopping center, we have to go out onto Lamson, so.
Yeah, the idea is not to isolate you guys, or people on other mobility devices don't have the same capabilities as what these e-bikes operate. And the municipal code talks about operating with due regard for public safety and at a safe speed, which most of the mobility devices outside of e-bikes, which would be the assistant scooters and those type of things that you'd see generally in that area, wouldn't be operating at a speed exceeding normally 5 to 8 miles per hour. So in our realm, that's operating in due regard for public safety, because they're not seeing the speed limit. First, the e-bike that's zipping up over the overpass at 45 miles per hour, because they're rushing to get back into Rosmore, and they're zooming past other people on mobility devices, that would be the subject we want to talk to and explain to them, no, this is acceptable. You need to be on the right side of the road and...
So it wouldn't be changing the ability of the slower devices to use that particular sidewalk?
No, because they're operating with due regard and...
Due regard, okay. Because they could, you know, always get off if a pedestrian's seen. They could also, I thought the rules for the trails were reasonable, and I suppose that's the bike trail that that would apply to?
Those are the bike trails, and it's actually mentioned in the vehicle code for e-bikes that they're supposed to dismount if pedestrians are within a 50 feet or so to make it a safe passage.
Okay. Let's see if I have any other. I was trying to remember.
And just to clarify, that the ordinance does state that riding one of these regulated mobility devices is prohibited in public areas, but only in public areas where there's a sign posted saying that it's restricted.
Okay. So if there's a sign saying it's allowed, but it's saying that bicycles are allowed, but that, presently, that's saying that bicycles are allowed, but that wouldn't let e-bikes ride there? Or, because it wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily be safe, is what I'm saying.
And so I think that Captain Ez, we didn't want to create a, you know, hard prohibition in here, not realizing which public areas might be acceptable and which weren't. And so I think Captain Ezrow, together with Chief Henderson, are going to have to look at individual situations like this.
Another sign added or something?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was just my concern. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. I think this is a great effort, especially because of all the changes in the past three or four years with e-bikes. And we all see them in our neighborhood riding around, and you can see it's a danger. So thanks for putting this together.
No problem.
And I also like the approach on how you're educating the kids first. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll move to adjourn. Adjourn the City Council to Monday, May 22.
Before we adjourn, we do need to take a motion on the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any call for a motion?
I'm out of it now. Somebody over there.
I did. I did.
Hit the button on your screen.
Okay. Is there a second?
Go.
I'll second.
Please vote.
It's the way you do business here.
And I'll go ahead and read the title. And it's an ordinance of the City of Seal Beach adding chapter 7.65, operation of regulated mobility devices to the Seal Beach Municipal Code to regulate the use of mobility devices in the city, and finding the ordinance to be exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Good, thank you. Now we'll adjourn. Adjourn the City Council to Monday, May 22, 2023, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you.